I'd like to call to order this evening's meeting and like to begin with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
All right, thank you. For my chair report, again, I'll keep it short, just to get, want to continue to thank everyone, board members, staff. And I don't know if I mentioned, I pointed out last, at our last meeting, I'd especially like to thank all our custodian, our maintenance, our security, and particularly Mr. Lance Horton, who has been a big help to the East Haven School District with volunteering his time, his staff, and of course, his continuous efforts throughout the schools. I just wanted to thank him on behalf of the Board of Education. And then I'll turn that over to the superintendent for the superintendent report.
Yes, thank you, Michelle. I'd like to also take the opportunity to thank extensively the Oberbrooke staff, Marissa Velazquez and her team, and Joe Ferriola from Adult Ed, and our parent educators for coordinating all the volunteers and efforts to unpack nine pallets of food from the food bank, bag it, organize it, and deliver it, not deliver it, but hand it out to almost 400 cars at East Haven High School last Thursday. Bob was also there, Linbo there, Jen Murry, various members from my cabinet, Lance Horton and his crew. It was a monumental task and effort, but a prime example of so much good that we have here in our community and how much people care and are supportive of that. So, thank you, everybody, for your efforts in that. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. D'Nuzzo, who is going to give you a little presentation relative to some thoughts and ideas and options for graduation that we've been considering. Ultimately, these are all just options at this point. We are awaiting further information and details from the state to finalize and make some decisions regarding it. So, Mr. D'Nuzzo, thank you for joining us this evening. Is he frozen? Is Mr. D'Nuzzo frozen? Hi, Mr. D'Nuzzo?
How are you?
Good. Can you hear me? Are you there?
I can now, yeah.
Okay. So, do you have, Randall, does Vinnie have screen sharing capabilities? Because he does have a PowerPoint that he's going to pull up and refer to as he goes through these options.
Can everyone see that?
Yep.
So, thank you. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to kind of fill everybody in with respect to some of the things that we've been thinking about with regards to honoring our class of 2020. We have been kind of waiting, quite honestly, on some guidance from the Governor's Office, which obviously came last week. And with that being said, we went through a variety of different decision-making kind of thought processes relative to what we hope to do. And again, we were considering four different options. Right now, we're still waiting on continued guidance from both the Health Department and the Governor's Office, and I believe also from the State Department of Education as well. But, you know, our decisions are being made based on, again, the Shore District Health Department and the Governor's Office currently. As of now, in consultation with the superintendent, the Health Department is not recommending any, anything, any large gatherings prior to June 30th. And the Governor's executive order that he has in place still limits the size of large gatherings. So, we've been thinking about how we can best honor our students in the safest way possible, but try to also keep it as close to a traditional ceremony as we possibly can, knowing that that's going to be a challenge for us, for everyone. For us, quite honestly, the focus is on our students experiencing that very special moment where they get to cross the stage and receive their diploma. So, whatever plan that we put in place, that we're hoping that that will encompass that experience. So, the first option is your traditional ceremony. Again, we do not know how likely this is, but this would be between, anytime between, drop a solid date. It is the time where we've given students the opportunity, who have incompletes, to make up their work. It's also a time that we start to figure that students will be heading off to campuses if they're going away, if their universities are going to continue with in-person classes for next year. So, we want to honor that and honor the fact that many of our students may likely be leaving their homes and enter around that time in August. The concerns with your traditional ceremony, we typically have around 2,000 to 2,500 guests come to our high school graduation ceremony. Obviously, social distancing, it looks like that's not going to be anything that is going to be going away anytime soon. So, that's clearly a concern. We did have some considerations with your traditional ceremonies, such as, do we limit it to guests? We know that that's a challenge. We do have many blended families in East Haven, so we do understand that and respect that. And then we also had considerations such as, would these types of ceremonies require PPE, such as masks? And then, given the timeline of these, what implications might it be with very warm temperatures, caps and gowns, masks, and some of those considerations for individuals who may be asthmatic or have some other respiratory issues that they deal with in general? So, this is option one. It's your traditional ceremony. Again, that's our hope. How likely it is, we're not quite sure yet. Option two would be a social distance ceremony, and that would obviously be a consideration if social distancing measures are in place. You may have seen a ceremony such as this at the Air Force Academy, where they put chairs on their football stadium field eight feet apart. They did limit it to two guests. We considered, should this be a students-only event if appropriate? If that were the case, we would certainly livestream it and record it for everyone to observe and view and have as a keepsake. And again, continuing with that consideration of the personal protective equipment, such as masks, heats, and the cap and gown impact as well going into the summer months. So, that is option two that we're considering right now as we move into further guidance from the Governor's Office. Option three, which I think is one that's picking up steam across the area and the state in working with area high school principals, this seems to be one that is moving more, more likely for many districts. The benefit to this is this can occur anytime after June 12th. It can occur anytime after our last day of school. It, the idea, and this is again, not set in stone, but the concept would be to have one vehicle per student, which can include family members, obviously, in the vehicle, provided they live in the same home, and of course, we have no way to regulate that. This would start at the Town Beach parking lot or possibly other locations based on guidance from the Police Department and traffic considerations that would have to be brought into, into the thought. We did discuss the possibility of staggering the schedule, so you wouldn't have 200 cars leaving the Town Beach parking lot at the same time. It would be more of a longer drawn-out type of event that we would consider doing. This would take a great deal of planning and a lot of logistical things that would have to go into it. But it would be a parade through town, ending up at the high school, hopefully with a police and fire department escort that would include possibly some of those pickup trucks that are playing music in the background, more of a very, very much a feel-good type of event. Students would pull into the circle, where the student would step out of their vehicle and receive their diploma in a manner that is not yet decided, but again, based on health and safety considerations. They would cross a mini-stage and then move to a location in the front of the school where our yearbook photographer would take a picture of that student. Mr. Steady from Steady Photography has committed the digital images, so that we could then create a virtual ceremony where students would have their picture with their cap and gown and their diploma jackets all displayed throughout a slideshow-type of presentation. And we would also have the recorded speeches from our albatory and salutatorian and dignitaries as well throughout the typical traditional event. Again, the added benefit to this option is that it would allow family members to observe the moment. They would be right there in their vehicle, watching their son or daughter or brother or sibling step out and receive their diploma. So, there is certainly that added benefit as well. And then our last consideration, and again, this is dependent upon any executive orders, but small mini-ceremonies, where if the governor allows gatherings but does not permit anything more than 50 or over 100 people, where obviously, social distancing measures would still be in place, we would be able to, and if you can envision kind of like our National Society induction ceremony, where we have all 35 or 40 students, and the dignitaries as well, we'd be able to have four or five smaller mini-ceremonies. Again, this would likely be students-only, livestreamed and recorded. Students would be divided alphabetically depending on the size that's allowed to happen. It would allow for speeches. We would continue to place chairs eight feet apart and practice social distancing. This would likely have to occur over a couple of days. We would have to have the events spaced apart, so that it allowed time for those to leave and those to come and enter. And again, it would require more than likely protective gear, as well as considerations for heat later into the summer months. So, these are the four options that we are considering at this time. These are not necessarily the only four. As new ideas surface in the next coming days, we do have to start to move towards planning and deciding on one of these four. We are hoping that the Governor's Office will either give further guidance with extended deadlines or timelines, so that we can then plan based accordingly and appropriately. But our number-one priority is making sure that the students in the class of 2020 are honored the best way that we possibly can and as traditional ceremony as we possibly can. But again, we all understand and we respect the fact that some of those decisions are not exactly within our power at this time. Anybody have any questions?
Vin, Mr. D'Nuzzo, Jack Stacy, just a comment. You know, just off the, reading this very quickly, I thought option three was fantastic. And a comment, I always thought at HSC, where I taught, we had the greatest venue, graduated right on Worcester Square. But on two occasions, due to weather, we had to move inside and we put a two-limit person per student. And I was part of the security contingent. I was literally run over. It's, just for your information, I don't think that that'll work. People will just disregard, you know, the two-person limit, and you'll have a lot of trouble. But, you know, thanks for all the hard work that you're doing. It looks great. And from my opinion, I just love three. I think that would, that's exciting, especially coming into the circle and being able to get out, get a diploma. You know, depends on how you want to do it. Board members could be there, or whoever spread out enough to view it. I think that'd be, that's a good idea.
I agree with Jack. I mean, hopefully, that will have some information soon. I know as a board member, as well as a pair of a graduating student, I would like to know what we might be doing as well. I agree. I think virtual is the best way to go with the cars in the grade.
Mr. D'Nuzzo, Eric Santiago, I agree also with the car, the parade and car ceremony up at the top of the school with the pictures and all that. And I think it's a nice way to get our community involved as well through all of this. And I think we would get a big out, you know, big turnout that everyone would be excited. I think they would all come out and, you know, join in on like, you know, the festivities and be able to celebrate the graduation as like, as a town, so.
Thank you. Thank you all for your feedback. Appreciate that.
Vin, you might want to just join in if I could.
Jeracy here, one second to you. You might have said it. Was there a deadline on decisions?
No, I think in working with the superintendent, you know, the governor has his briefs every so often, and I know that there is one coming up in the next several days. I'm hoping that by that May 20th date, which was the date that was out there from the beginning, hoping that after that time, there is either further timelines that are shared with us. But at some point, and, you know, I don't think we're looking at anything in the month of June right now. Even that motorcade thing, even, you know, we could do that anytime after June 12th. That's going to require a great deal of planning and collaboration. So, I think we're still looking at that type of thing into late June, early July, or again, depending on input that we get from the Health Department as far as those types of things. Anything that we do, we're going to share with them as well and run those ideas by them and then get their feedback first. So, I would say we need to make a decision as far as which option we're going to go with within the next couple of weeks.
Vin, regarding like date, I think, I know, I think Branford as well is going into July, right? That's the date that you're, they're going in, date in July as well?
That's what I'm hearing. I heard they were going, well, from the start, I heard they were just going to go purely virtual. I don't know if they've changed course at all, but that was what the feedback that I got from their leadership team at the start.
Yeah, I wasn't sure about an option. I just knew that they were doing it in July. So, that gives a little bit more time as well. Thank you.
I think we have to be, really what's going to dictate will be the Health Department saying what you can and can't do. And I think that once you get a little bit more clearance from the governor and the Health Department. But I do think that we need to commit to a plan as soon as possible, so people can plan, at least know what's expected. I don't want to be the bad guy and say, hey, look what's going to happen, you know, we don't know. So, I do think the state will come forward and give some parameters around this, so you can then very quickly, or, you know, begin to plan for whichever avenues that you can take. But, you know, option three sounds really, really good to me, too. So, and you did put a lot of work into this, so. But I think the sooner we can let people know, the obvious, you know, we're all up against this. I mean, Branford might, if they went full virtual, then that's why they have a date, and they can now just go forward with that plan, which is, you know, at least everybody now is, knows exactly what they're doing and when they're doing it, if they are. I don't know that they truly are yet.
Yeah, gee, I don't know the actual choice. I just know it was in July. I don't have a choice, too.
Yeah. So, thanks, Vin. Thanks for this presentation, too.
You're welcome. Anytime. Thank you.
Hard work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Vinnie.
You're welcome. Thank you. Everyone stay safe.
You, too. Okay, at this time, the Assistant Superintendent is going to give a brief report.
Sorry. Thank you. At this time, I just wanted to extend my thanks to our many teachers in light of Teacher Appreciation Week. We have seen many creative and innovative teaching practices, and I appreciate their connection. I also appreciate the many families who've provided feedback on what's working and what's not, and what we need to do better for our students and our community. We continue to monitor and evaluate the hard work of teachers and families to support our students. I also wanted to highlight the fact that recently, Joe Marangial, Social Studies Instructional Leader, and Social Studies teacher Lindsay Wright, and I were afforded the opportunity to showcase some exciting work we are doing at a webinar offered by the Connecticut State Department of Education on Student-Centered Instruction in Social Studies. It was specific to distance learning, and we were invited back to a longer, more extensive rapport of some of the things that we're doing on May 18th. So, I'm excited to highlight all of the great work that we're doing. Tonight, also on this evening's agenda, I believe there is, for your consideration, a look at the Math Curricula Resource Adoption Team's hard work in vetting resources for 6 through 12 math. Thanks to those members of the Board who were able to attend the May 7th Curriculum Workshop, where the team reviewed the options that were considered. Our team's protocol for reviewing resources to make sure we're using the resources of the district wisely is pretty robust. It includes reviewing materials for quality, research-based alignment, and cultural responsiveness, as well as compliance with our technology systems and data privacy protections and mathematical quality. We're looking for you to, we did provide an opportunity for you to review some of that material, and please let me know if you have any questions. And for those members of the community here in attendance or listening remotely, if you are interested in learning more about these Grade 6 to 8 and 9 through 11 resources, we are happy to host a Zoom meeting session for both grade bands. Please email me at jmurhy@easthaven.k12.CT.us if you would like to be invited to an information session. And that is all.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, I think that brings us to approval of meeting minutes for our special board meeting of April 28th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Michelle, it's Jack. Before we do that, can I make a comment?
On?
On the past two, on the superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent's reports?
Okay.
All right. So, first of all, I was, I wasn't able to view the superintendent's presentation about the budget, but I just wanted to say that I've heard some really good feedback on the job that she did, so I wanted to compliment her on her presentation to those parties that were involved. And I also wanted to make a statement. I don't know what other schools, but I do know that today, the academy went out and put signs on the eighth-grade student lawns congratulating them on moving up. I just thought that was a terrific idea. I happened to see some feedback. There were some things on Facebook today regarding that. So, again, congratulations to those, the people at the academy and any other school that happened to be working like that. You know, everybody's working so hard to make these kids, you know, that are moving up, make it somewhat special. So, good job for everybody.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy.
Okay, Michelle DeLucia speaking. Approval of meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of 4:28:20, the Special Board of Ed meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
Yeah, go on, second it.
I second it.
Second by Mary Ann Pellegrino. Thank you.
Michelle.
Yes.
I keep freezing. I tried to stop as well. I just wanted to, just before you move on, Jen, it was wonderful. I was present for that presentation. It was beautiful.
Lisa, could you just wait till we finish voting? We have a motion on the table.
You keep freezing. I don't, I didn't know that that's what it was. I thought Jack just finished it.
Nope. No, he didn't. Okay. So, just give it a hold. All right. So, we have a motion on the table to approve the meeting minutes from Special Board of Ed meeting of April 28th, 2020.
He did just.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to roll call? Actually, we do. We have to roll call vote.
You ready?
Yes.
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes.
All in favor.
Okay, motion carries. Which brings us to the consent agenda. We have approval of invoices for fiscal year 2019, 2020 in the amount of $1,177,982.95. We have approval of purchase orders over 7,000, and we have approval of budget transfers in the amount of $282,151.95. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the review of invoices, the review of purchase orders, and the review of budget transports, transfers in the amounts read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second Liz Esposito.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Esposito. So, before you, we have approval of the consent agenda. We'll have a vote at this time. Ellen, could you do a roll call?
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. Okay, so that motion carries. That will bring us to audience of citizens, and as you know, anything that was sent in was shared with board members prior to the meeting and will be handled accordingly. So, I am going to hand the meeting over to New Business, to the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. DeLucia. New Business, 6.1, Discussion and Possible Action on Resolution for Schools and Libraries' Universal Services E-Rate for 2020-2021.
Do I have a motion?
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I move that we accept the resolution for schools and libraries' universal services E-Rate for 2020-2021.
Erica Santiago, I second.
Okay, so the motion before you is to approve the resolution for schools' libraries' universal services E-Rate for 2020-2021. Can we have a roll call, Ellen?
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. Motion carries. All in favor.
6.2, Discussion and Possible Action on Sodexo Adult Meal Price Increase from $3.75 per meal to $4.50 per meal.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Erica Santiago, I make a motion that we approve the Sodexo adult increase for meals.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, Tia DePalma.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the Sodexo adult meal price increase. On roll call vote, please.
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia? Lisa?
I said yes, huh?
Oh, okay. Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. All in favor, motion carries.
6.3, Discussion and Possible Action on the Deer Run ADA Handicap Compliant Playground Project.
Do I have a motion?
Tia DePalma, I make a motion to take action on the Deer Run ADA Compliant Playground Project, as discussed and explained in subcommittee.
Erica Santiago, I second it.
Okay, so the motion before you is to move ahead with the Deer Run ADA Compliant Playground Project. Ellen, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. All in favor, motion carries.
6.4, Discussion and Possible Action on the Purchase of Athletic Scoreboards for East Haven High School Gymnasium, East Haven High School Chrisophy Field, and Joseph Malillo Middle School Gymnasium.
And I'd just like to say before we go in and I get a motion, we did talk about possibly pulling funds from the rental account. However, I believe there are, there is a certain amount of unutilized funds for spring sports that I think we might want to look at first in the operating budget.
Okay, so if the Board is inclined to approve the scoreboards for the two for the high school and the one for the middle school with the recommendation made by Ms. Bovair and Mr. Verteram for northeast scoreboards, we can utilize operational funds first and then rental funds if necessary.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Erica Santiago, I make a motion that we utilize the northeast scoreboards and approve the recommendation by Lynn Bovair and Anthony Verteram.
I second it. Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Okay, so the motion before you is to... Okay, so the motion before you is to approve the purchase of athletic scoreboards, uh, based on the recommendation of the Athletic Director and Finance Manager. All in favor, um, roll call vote.
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia? Lisa? Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
And Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. All in favor, motion carries.
Um, 6.5, discussion and action on purchase of East Haven High School gym sound system. Um, not recommending any action on that this evening. We are still in the process of collecting some quotations, and we'll bring it back to the next, uh, the board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do you need a motion to table that? Because I'll make, no, okay.
Just.
No action.
There's nothing to do.
Yep.
We'll move on to, yeah, 6.6.
6.6, discussion and possible action on the Adult Education Program Enhancement Project Grant, also known as the PEP Grants. Again.
Tia DePalma?
Oh.
Sorry, just a little background. These are the, the grants, um, that parallel our adult education for EL Civics, for NEDP, and for our Family Engagement Coordinator. Um, and the grant does include stipends, um, for someone to facilitate the implementation of those programs. It's currently Joe Ferriola at Adult Education.
Do I have a motion?
Yes, Tia DePalma, just, um, I make a motion to accept the Adult Education Program Enhancement Project Grant, PEP.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll go, I second it.
Liz Esposito?
I seconded by Mrs. Santiago. Um, Ellen, can you put it to the board for, uh, vote?
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Um, Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. Motion carries. All in favor.
Um, 6.7, discussion and possible action on personal contracts for Tracy Acera, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Deb Byers, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Devon Caroline, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Amber Conti, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Mark Capola, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Elizabeth Hume, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Carol Pates, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Janet Sanchez, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Mamiko Filagno, Assistant Teacher at Overbrook, Maria Carbone, Lead Teacher, Overbrook, Karina Hume, Lead Teacher, Overbrook, Sharona Kennedy, Lead Teacher, Overbrook, Heather Mazuko, Lead Teacher at Overbrook, um, in the high school, Jessica Sadie, Lead Teacher at Overbrook, Jennifer Thomas, Lead Teacher at Overbrook, Viviana Zamora, Lead Teacher at Overbrook, um, Amanda Joy, Parent Educator at Overbrook, Sherry Franceschi, Lead Parent Educator at Overbrook, Daniel Resto, Family Engagement Coordinator, Adult Education, and Scott Benoit, Truancy Officer District Line.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the personal contracts as listed by the superintendent this evening?
Yes, Tia DePalma, I'd like to make a, um, a motion to accept the so-for-mentioned, um, personal contract.
Second, Jack Stacy.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Stacy. Ellen, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. All in favor, motion carries.
Um, and 6.8, discussion and possible action on the list of rehires and hires. Uh, Jeffrey Fletcher for the Middle School Coach Wrestling, um, and Amanda Bradley, East Haven High School Coach, Assistant Volleyball.
I make a motion that we accept the, um, action, uh, the list for hires and rehires, the two positions.
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I second it.
Okay, so we have a, a motion put forward by Mr. Palma, seconded by Mrs. Pellegrino. Ellen, can you do a roll call vote?
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. All in favor, motion carries.
Um, I'd like to request, um, the addition of 6.9 on the agenda, uh, discussion and possible approval of the math curricular resources for grades six through 12.
Okay, can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to add 6.9, right?
Second, Erica Santiago.
Okay. Um, Ellen, roll call vote to add 6.9?
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. All in favor, motion carries. 6.9 is added. So at 6.9, we have discussion and possible action on approval of math curriculum for grades six through nine?
The math curricular resources.
Well.
Grade six through, six through 12. Okay. All right.
So can we discuss that?
Yes, so I will. I'm sorry, grade six through eight is the Pearson and Envision Math, um, that will be rolling up from the elementary level that the board had already approved. And in grades, uh, nine through 12 is the McGraw-Hill Reveal Math, both programs of which the Assistant Superintendent presented to the board at the curriculum workshop last week.
So we can discuss that, Michelle? May I?
Yeah.
Tia DePalma? You discuss after the motion? We, we haven't been doing.
Yeah, no, we just do clarification prior, clarification prior to the mo- motion.
But tonight, okay, I'm not, all right. So I'm making a motion that we add, um, we accept the math curriculum, um, that was discussed at the, uh, workshop last week for grades six through 12.
Mary Ann Pellegrino, I'll second it.
Okay, um, motion by Ms. DePalma, seconded by Mrs. Pellegrino. So at the, at this time, is there any questions, discussion?
Yes, I just, it's not a question. It's a statement that it was very thoroughly explained, and they put in a lot of hard work, and it's amazing how it came out to be so, um, a lot of input from all of the, the stakeholders. And I thought it was a great presentation. More than happy to vote for it.
I agree with that.
Thank you.
Yes, Jack Stacy, I'd just like to say, Jen, you did a great job at the workshop, um, and you made, uh, a difficult, uh, subject matter very easy to follow. Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. I will also pass your, those thoughts along to Jen Bauer, our math instructional leader, and the members of the teachers were really involved, and, and they will appreciate those kind words.
Jen, I also want a second, well, a third, fourth. It was wonderful. I was there as well. Um, before, when I was trying to speak, it's, I didn't know, I, I froze out, but you had asked a question about your presentation, just how everyone is receptive and some are not receptive. I received a few messages about the whole process, about being parents' understanding and so forth, and Ms. Church, Mrs. Church sent out the, uh, the survey, you know, about the whole process. Some individuals are not getting the survey, and they're having some, I'm getting some negative.
That survey, Lisa, I think that survey is not related to the curricular resources for grades six through 12 that Jen circulated. The survey I think you're referring to is for distance learning.
Correct. They're two. They put both, they put two things in the Texas messages to me, so it's just, it's just what, there's not for both of them?
No.
There's just, there's not, okay.
So, the, I think the survey that you're referring to that, um, was circulated was about distance learning that might have ended up in some people's spam email boxes. It wasn't.
I didn't get either, so it was news to me. That's why, I mean, I'm trying to.
It wasn't related to Jennifer Murray's presentation on the six through 12 curricular resources.
I think we want to make sure everybody receives information, so we'll, we'll certainly look into the, the, and provide recommendations to families and ensuring that, um, their emails, addresses are correct in Power School. We can make sure. Um, but for now, did you have any questions about the curricular resources for, um, the Envision Math Program for grades six through eight? Or nine through, oh, um, it's actually grades nine through 11. Our 12th grade math is a different elective, um, course.
No, but thank you for clarifying it, because I was given the wrong information, so thank you.
Of course, yes, we're always trying to clarify. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions? No, so then, then at this time, um, I put forward the motion made by, I think, Mr. Palma, seconded by Mrs. Pellegrino, which is 6.9, approval of math curriculum six through 12, six through 11. Uh, all, all in favor? Um, Ellen, roll call?
Tia DePalma?
Yes.
Liz Esposito?
Yes.
Lisa Jeracy Anastasia?
Yes.
Mary Ann Pellegrino?
Yes.
Erica Santiago?
Yes.
Jack Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle DeLucia?
Yes. It would be all in favor, motion carries. So at thi- this time, we're coming to, um, discussion concerning future agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to ensure there's, uh, anything specific on the next agenda? You, you could always email, of course, myself and the superintendent at any time prior to the meeting, but.
I would like to clarify some, Erica, I'd like to clarify something. Did you say that you were going to, how are we going to rectify that problem? Because I received several messages. Are you going to resend it? The emails out, or what are you going to do?
Perhaps we could add it. Point of order, this is.
I'm sorry. People are talking.
Point of order, we need to go back to the agenda. Um, if we could, we, we either discuss future agenda items or, and then we can, um, you know, that can be done after the meeting, actually, but, um, point of order, we're discussing future agenda items.
Question, Tia. That's part of the problem here. I asked a question.
Okay, all right, so how about at the next meeting, we go, we could, oh, we could go ahead and we'll add the agenda item on how to, uh, to discuss communication?
Should the.
Is that what you're asking for, Lisa?
Erica and Michelle, you need to really figure this out, because it's ongoing. Even before, and I'm going to say, I'm glad we're on film, so everyone sees the ignorance. You don't disrespect somebody. Jack spoke, I tried to speak. You shut somebody out. Not appropriate. I'm discussing concerns. You let one person speak and you shut the other person off. Not okay. Not appropriate. I have questions I need to ask. No, 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 I'm not done talking.
I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Tia, I'm speaking. You're ignorant. Ignorant. No, you're disrespectful. I can.
Point of order, I.
Excuse me.
Michelle, I'm going to ask you to please censor.
I'm so glad this is on film, because it doesn't stop.
Very inappropriate right now.
One, two, three, doesn't, no, you are. I was speaking. You don't let people speak.
Okay.
Not okay, Tia. Doesn't go one way.
All right, so we could, we could add this, we could add this as a future agenda item, and, um, this might be a good, a good time to end the meeting. Do I have a motion to end this evening?
I'll email.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second.
I second it. Mary Ann Pellegrino, second.
All right, meeting adjourned.